Good evening. I'd like to call to order the October 28th Lansing City Council Meeting. Clerk Swope, would you please call the roll?
Uh, Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Councilmember Pelavonaglu.
Present.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Present.
Okay, there are seven members present at quorum. Uh, Councilmember Jackson is not here at the moment. And we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Okay, at this time, do we have anybody that would like to have someone remembered at this time? Uh, Mayor Shore.
I have two. Um, one, as I think we all know, Joel Ferguson passed away after a very long struggle. And, um, he was first African-American city councilman. He was councilman for several years, developer in our city. So, um, my condolences to the Ferguson family. Um, and I understand there's going to be a big public event at some point in the next week or two, uh, I think, is it after the elections? November 6th. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. November 6th. I know Judge Jizzo was working on that at Presley. Um, second, and a little more surprising, um, we had a gentleman named Mike Schultz passed away. Um, Mike is our Chief Mechanical Inspector here in the city of Lansing. Uh, he passed away suddenly on Saturday. Uh, he was hired in in 2018. Uh, he was appointed Chief Mechanical Inspector this past spring. Um, he worked over 30 years in the mechanical and plumbing trades profession. And, uh, he worked closely on all of our new constructions, major renovation work in the city for the past six years, ensuring mechanical and fire suppression was done safely. Um, he leaves behind his wife, Jeannie, uh, two sons, a daughter, and five grandchildren. Um, so very sad. I spoke with his family, and, um, they certainly appreciate that, uh, how great the city of Lansing has been to him. Um, he, uh, he told Raleigh, uh, a week or two ago that he was very excited to see this new 26-story building get put up and be able to work on that. And, uh, so if we can keep his family in our thoughts, as well as our city, and to be honest with you, our staff. Um, our staff is, EDP is hurting, uh, this week. And, uh, we hope everyone will keep their, in their thoughts. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there any additional, uh, members of council that'd like someone to be remembered at this time? I would like to, uh, uh, keep the, the family of Ms. Souten in your thoughts and prayers. Uh, Ms. Souten is my, actually, my brother-in-law's mother. Uh, she's a lifelong resident in South Lansing. She just recently passed, I believe, on Friday. So, uh, I'd like to keep their, uh, uh, family in my thoughts and prayers as well. So, with that, we'll take a moment for our meditation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have for your approval the printed council proceedings of September 30th.
Vice President Hussein.
Sure, I would move the meeting minutes as presented.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any additional comments from council? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, we are to special ceremonies. We have a city clerk and mayor joint presentation recognition of Caitlin Stouffer Hopkins for the Michigan's I Voted sticker design contest.
Okay, anybody in the audience that would like to participate, please come down to the well.
Yeah.
Staff, come back behind here.
Are those shirts gonna be on sale at all anywhere?
There's a licensing issue with this. You have a Bureau of Elections.
Nice job, you guys.
All right, so, um, the Secretary of State had a contest earlier this year to design some new I Voted stickers and get some fresh look here in the state of Michigan. And we were so excited when one of the finalists was Caitlin Stouffer Hopkins from Lansing, whose mother, by the way, works in my office full-time, Anna. Um, so we were very excited to be able to vote for her and so happy when she was one of the winners across the state. And now, uh, her sticker is in production. It's available in every jurisdiction across Michigan. Uh, we will, we have them at our early voting site along with the other winners. Um, and we're just so proud of her, um, and not only her, but her whole family's involvement in elections. Uh, besides Anna, her mom and her brother have worked as election workers. Uh, so, uh, election, uh, administration can be a family thing. And for young people, it can be a career path. It's a great occupation. You get to encourage people to vote. Um, so, uh, the mayor and I would like to present to you Caitlin this certificate in recognition of your contribution.
I'm just gonna, I'm gonna add just a few things. Uh, my wife works for the Secretary of State, so when I got to see these, um, I was pretty excited and to hear that we had a, a Lansing sticker. Uh, just, just wonderful. Um, so thank you for your creativity. Uh, thank you for submitting. Um, we are extremely proud to have you. And, uh, as, as Clerk Swope says, maybe you are one of our future city clerks here in the city of Lansing. Uh, no pressure, no pressure. Um, and while I'm at it, I do want to thank, we have the whole clerk staff back here. And I want to, um, thank our clerk staff. I got to vote in person on Saturday at 10:00 a.m. And it was flawless. It was perfect. There was a line, which yay, people are coming out to vote. It wasn't too long, um, which was also good. But really, they did just a fantastic job. The ballot on demand worked perfectly. Um, my wife got to, she actually had a ballot sent to our house, and she got to vote, an absentee ballot. I got to vote on-site. Uh, my daughter voted by mail. My son's voting, um, on Election Day, so, uh, we're using all of the systems. Um, but, uh, but our clerk staff has done such a great job of helping our residents, having places in Rio and, uh, and at Foster. And again, as, as Councilman Hussein said at committee, the whole, you know, the, having this option now is gonna come up in, on jolly. Uh, really, just an exceptional job. And, uh, you should all be very proud. So, thank you, everybody behind me, and, and thank you Caitlin for, for your creativity.
Do you want to say anything? No, I don't think she wants to say anything. Uh, the mayor was right. My staff is incredibly dedicated and hardworking. And think about, you know, we've got nine days of early voting, and then we've got Monday and Election Day. And then, uh, they work the week before that. So that's like 17 days in a row that this team is working without, uh, taking many, any, many if any days off. So I'm incredibly proud of my team. So thank you very much. And thank you Caitlin.
Caitlin says you all should go vote.
Should we go like in front of the microphone? It's too late. Okay, sorry.
Okay, that brings us to comments by councilmembers and the city clerk.
Okay, do we have any comments from council? Uh, Vice President Hussein?
Just, just two quick comments. Um, the first is, um, we are hoping folks can get out tomorrow, uh, 1:30 p.m. over at 5815 Wise Road. This is Lansing Technical High School, formerly known as, uh, Harry Hill. Uh, they will be, uh, kind of presenting for the first time their brand new track, uh, new bleachers, new fencing, new lighting, new, it's, it's just an absolute beautiful facility. Uh, there's been a lot of advocacy, um, I think, the past several years, uh, with regard to that particular, uh, facility and, and the impact, um, that kind of an upgraded, invested-in facility could have for folks, um, across South Lansing, particularly those folks, um, that, uh, live in, in some of our disadvantaged communities and just simply don't have, um, the same type of access to, as an example, gym memberships and things like that. So, um, a lot of, a lot of credit should go to some of the early advocates, uh, whether that be RSL, uh, the Southwest Action Group, uh, but also Ben Schuldner, um, the school board, and Senator Sarah Anthony. Uh, Senator, the latter was an incredible champion, I think, at the state level, uh, to make sure that, uh, the funding was there. There was a $500,000 appropriation from the state. Uh, the, uh, school district didn't match that. Uh, but we have, um, a true gem, I think, over there. Uh, and so, again, that's tomorrow, 1:30 p.m. Um, come out and, uh, maybe, you know, take a lap around the track and, and thank the folks that were involved in making that happen. Super, super exciting. Um, I was going to say something about the Village Trucker Treat, but we do have Michael Lynn in the audience, so I'm sure he'll talk about that. Uh, so I'm gonna move to, uh, our third ward constituent contact meeting. We do have a meeting, uh, in November. This will be our last meeting of the year. We always take December off. Uh, we know that, no matter your creed, no matter, uh, the cultural activities that you practice, that those weekends in December are precious. And so, uh, we are meeting November 9th, 10 to 12, uh, noon. This is at, uh, 5825 Wise Road, which is in the Sandy Allen Room, uh, at the Alfreda Schmidt South Side Community Center. We'll have a number of, uh, our South Lansing representatives, uh, on hand. We'll be talking about a number of issues. Uh, and so please, uh, consider coming out, uh, maybe even grabbing a neighbor, a friend, bringing them out as well. Uh, always a great time. I think there's always great information sharing. And I think the relationships, uh, that we're able to build at these, uh, contact meetings, um, always pay dividends for the people and spaces of South Lansing. So, uh, folks can make it out. We'd certainly love to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President, do we have any additional comments from council? Vice President, or, I'm sorry, uh, Councilwoman Pelavonaglu.
Thank you. Uh, so I saw Mike Lynn shaking his head out in the audience, so I will, um, talk for a second about, uh, the Trucker Treat at Village Lansing. They're located at 3525 South Martin Luther King Boulevard. There's a large parking lot. I can tell you they are actively seeking additional trunks and candy donations. So, um, if you are interested in helping out at all with a trunk or by sponsoring candy, please contact, um, the folks at the Village Lansing. And I believe that is thevillagelancing.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Brown.
Thank you. Uh, I heard there was a challenge tomorrow if we made it.
Oh, I run that track.
No further comment.
Geez. Do we have any additional comments from council? All right, seeing none. City Clerk?
All right, thank you, President Garza. So, um, as you know, we, I've talked about this before. We have three ways of voting. Uh, you can vote at home. Uh, so there is still, uh, time, although it's getting a little bit tight, to get an absentee ballot. Uh, you can go to michigan.gov/votes and apply online. We'll get the ballot in the mail as quickly as we can. Um, or you can come in person to, uh, City Hall, uh, Rio Road, or Foster Center. Uh, for those, uh, who have been issued an absentee ballot, and by the way, we've issued over 25,000 absentee ballots, uh, with an over 70% return rate. So, um, lots of those are coming in quickly. Um, and, uh, about 7,500 voters still have ballots that they need to return to us. And then in terms of the early voting, that's been going well. So, uh, Saturday was, uh, extremely busy at both locations, especially in the, in the morning. Uh, and so far, we've had, uh, 2,665 people vote, and almost exactly half and half between Rio and Foster Community Center. So, um, remember, we've got, uh, six more days of early voting. That's through Sunday. And then, of course, Election Day, polls are open from 7:00 a.m. until 8 o'clock p.m. And again, if you're not sure where to vote, uh, you can go to lansingvotes.gov or michigan.gov/vote. And we will, or call our office, uh, 311, or, uh, 4834131, and we'll get you, uh, make sure you're going to the right location. Um, and with that, we are to community event announcements. If there's anyone in the audience who has a community event, we'll give you one minute to tell us the details.
Okay, just, just real quick. Uh, Clerk Swope, I did see something, uh, on the news today about potentially five out-of-state ballots were returned to a Lansing Dropbox. What happens to those ballots?
Uh, if they're, if we get, uh, actually, we've gotten a couple dozen over the past several weeks. Uh, the Lansing drop boxes are only for voters who are registered to vote in the city of Lansing. So if you live in Delta Township, or Delhi, or Lansing Township, please do not use a City of Lansing Dropbox. Um, what we do is we make an attempt to contact the voter, and then, uh, if, if we don't hear back, or if the voter wants us to, we'll just drop it in the mail to the correct jurisdiction. My fear is, on Election Day, there is not going to be time for that to happen. So, as we get closer to Election Day, your risk of putting it in the wrong jurisdiction, um, increases. So I appreciate you bringing that up. Um, so, if you live in the city of Lansing, it will say Lansing City Clerk as the return address. If it says Lansing Township, you don't live in the city of Lansing. Okay, so use the Lansing Township Dropbox, or any other jurisdiction. Make sure you use the Dropbox for your jurisdiction, or use the postal system. It is free postage on ballots, state-paid postage. So feel free to drop it in the U.S. Mail. Uh, probably three or four more days you can do that, and still be fairly safe that it's gonna make it on time. Um, but yes, I appreciate you bringing that up. Please put it in the correct jurisdiction Dropbox.
Okay, um, minor delay, but whatever. Um, so, on Wednesday, November 13th, uh, a week, I think a week after the election, um, the Old Everett Neighborhood meeting will occur. And will be at, uh, the Village Lansing through 525 South Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard. Um, I also want to remind people that, uh, several positions are currently vacant. Uh, most importantly, Vice President, Treasurer, Secretary, and now, because someone resigned, the Communications Director. And we've still got board positions from Kavanaugh and Kendon that we still need to fill. And also, the, um, neighborhood grant process is, uh, starting at this point. So, I think it's very crucial that we, uh, get somewhat close to a full board. So if you live in the Old Everett Neighborhood and you're interested in attending Neighborhood Beans, please attend the next one, because this might be the last one of the year before January. So, please apply.
Thank you very much. Uh, any other community events?
This is not exactly a community event, but I hope I can do this here. Brian Jackson was our male overall winner in our Race Tour Store 5K Run Walk in Mount Hope Cemetery on Saturday. He left before he picked up his award. So I would like to present Brian Jackson with his award for running a 5K in 19 minutes and 6 seconds. Thank you for supporting our efforts.
Thank you. Other community event announcements?
Thank you, Trinity. I appreciate it. Our Councilwoman Pelavonaglu, I appreciate that, because I wanted to talk about Omaha 360, or the Lansing 360. Uh, is this Wednesday from 12 to 1? For, really, this is for everybody out here. All of you already know. Uh, we are, uh, open to the public. Anybody can come on this. It's a Zoom. If you need information of where the Zoom is, it's empowerlansing.org. You can find the Zoom link there. It's a very comprehensive conversation around gun violence prevention, intervention, and support. And we really, literally do need the community to be in this conversation, because as we're building out what our community response to gun violence looks like, it's gonna take all of the people in this room, and everybody in Lansing area, tri-county area, to be involved in that conversation. Right now, we've got all the stakeholders we get asked to be in the space, including the mayor, council members, uh, the governor's office, I mean, it's prosecuting attorney, all of those folks are in the space. Uh, lots of folks that are working directly with gun violence, but we need the community voice. So, our next meeting is, uh, Wednesday, 12 to 1, again, on Zoom. And then our in-person meeting will be November 13th, uh, at Foster Community Center in room 213 from 12 to 1. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other community events? All right. Um, we are to the point in the agenda when, if you want to sign up for public comment on legislative matters, we need you to get up and do that. Um, Public Matters does include the, uh, four scheduled public hearings, as well as, uh, action items 8 through 27. Um, so, uh, if you have not, uh, did not sign in on your way in and wish to, uh, speak, uh, to, at, to council, we'll give you another minute to sign up in the back. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mayor Shore.
Thank you, Mr. President and Mr. Clerk. Uh, a few announcements. Uh, first, uh, to everyone's delight, as the leaves are falling, our weekly, weekly yard waste will resume again, starting on Monday, uh, through, uh, whenever we're done. I have to get that, that date, so I'll get a few at a future council meeting. But, um, as the leaves are coming down and, and yard waste bags are showing up on the sides of the roads, we will be picking up weekly, starting on Monday. Um, wonderful event, uh, in Clifford Park. We now have six new pickleball courts. The first pickleball outdoor courts in the city of Lansing. Uh, six courts, and then a tennis court that also has pickleball on it. Um, I got to partake, and myself and the Chief of Police were roundly defeated by, uh, Mark Lawrence on my staff and Brett Koschinsky, who is certainly a, a very nice winner. Um, so, uh, that was fun. Um, I want to thank everybody who came and who helped out at our very successful trick-or-treat, both at Benjamin Davis Park and at Berchard Park. Um, it was a lot of fun. It was a lot of fun to see the kids get to walk around the track and, and go to the different vendors. Thank you to all the vendors that were there. Uh, it was really a wonderful event. I got to see the one at, at Benjamin Davis. I didn't get to see the one at Berchard, but I heard it went well. And, uh, Chief Odom in the Fire Department told me that they gave all their candy away. So that's good news, that we're able to, to do that for our kids. Uh, thank you also to everyone who came to our, um, Neighborhood Summit, uh, which also was, was very successful. Uh, on November 1st, we will be doing a blood drive, uh, from 11:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. at our, uh, Police Ops Center on Wise Road in the Explorer Room. So, uh, hopefully, everybody will, uh, show up to, to give blood, if you can. Uh, and then finally, I want to, to raise to this body, because I know it's come up before, uh, Lansing Fire Department this week has brought on five cadets, uh, in our high school cadet program. So we've got five of our high schoolers who are gonna be acting as cadets with our firefighters. They'll be doing it three days a week, and Saturdays between 250 and 275 hours. So as we try and, and bring our own youth, uh, into our fire department, especially those kids that, that know our city, uh, I'm excited that we've got five of our own youth, uh, high schoolers that are gonna be cadets with our fire departments. Thank you to our, our firefighters who will be working with them, our training staff. And, uh, and I'm excited that we can have that partnership. Uh, that's what I got. Thank you, uh, Mr. President. Trying to go slow, because I saw you were finalizing things. Thank you.
All right. Um, we're actually going to, um, go a little bit out of order on the agenda here. We have a couple of appointments, um, that we're gonna swear the people in, uh, before public comment. So we're going to move forward to, uh, item 19, uh, the appointment of Julie Vanderboom to the Capitol Area District Library Board. And that'll be followed by, uh, Farhan Sheikh Omar, uh, to the Board of Police Commissioners.
Uh, thank you. Julie, you can come up to the front here. And it's my honor to move for appointment Julie Vanderboom for the Library Board. She said in our meeting that she's an avid library supporter. It's, she's, uh, char, she was a charter commission candidate, and she got to speak to a lot of people in the neighborhoods over and over, many different neighborhoods throughout the city. And she wants to continue using what she learned when she talked to those people in some productive way. If you read what she put in her application, part of it, she says, "Serving on the board would not only allow me to contribute to the strategic direction of an institution I care about, but also to support initiatives that improve access to resources and cultural enrichment for area residents." She checks all the boxes, cross all the Ts and all the Is, and it's her first choice. And I think after her, um, coming to our committee and introducing herself, that she would be a great fit, and I would move her appointment.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any additional comments from council? Seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
And repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
As a Capitol Area District Library Board member.
As a Capitol Area District Library Board member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
And that will take us to item number 21. Councilman Cost.
Thank you, President Garza. Uh, Farhan, do you want to come up here? Um, we had, uh, Mr. Omar come for, um, Public Safety October 22nd. Um, he had told us that, um, he's a 19-year resident of Lansing. He's a refugee. Um, he wants to bridge the gap between community and police. Um, and, you know, we had had a healthy discussion about the fact that, um, Farhan has made it a habit to show up to advisory board meetings that he doesn't even sit on, um, as a member of the public. Um, we were quite impressed, um, with the fact that, um, you know, he is so involved in this community. Um, I get the opportunity to see it, um, being the first ward city council member, um, seeing him in action. And, and he works hard. Um, the other question we ask, that I ask of everybody, is, do you have time for this? And he said, absolutely. Um, so I would move, uh, Farhan Sheikh Omar for the first ward member of the Board of Police Commissioners.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any additional comments? Uh, Councilman Brown.
Um, thank you. I would just, um, ask, I know you've been very vocal of your why, so everyone could hear your why, that you would like to be on this commission.
Uh, good evening. Um, the reason why I really wanted to join this board, um, is because it's very important. Uh, one of the reasons is, the police cannot do its job without the community, and the community cannot be protected without the police. So we need to unite and bridge the gap between the community and the police. And I believe, being young, um, you know, growing up in a refugee camp, uh, spending a lot of time in our city, um, being to every meeting that, you know, I'm not required to be there, um, has given me the opportunity to, you know, one, connect with people, see what our needs are. And I believe I'm the best person to breach that gap and make sure that our police department has what it needs, um, and the community has what it needs, the confidence, uh, accountability, transparency, and integrity. And so that's what I bring, that's what I plan on bringing to the board.
Fantastic. Thank you. I can support that.
Okay, is there any additional comments from council? I guess I have one. Um, you just brought up, uh, something that made me think about it. How you doing, sir? Um, in the past, I know that there has been movements to defund the police. Would, would you, would you be interested in trying to defund the, the police?
Would I be interested in defunding the police?
Defunding the police.
Um, no. And if you look back at my comments and the things that I ran on when I did run for office, I called for more social workers. And that is something that the police department has adapted in the city. I've called for, um, more oversight. I've called for more boots on the ground. And the city has now teamed up with advanced peace. And so, I understand some people are so quick to jump on, "Defund the police." But if you look at some of the things that I've called for that has improved our community, um, you'll see that we have actually implemented some of the things that I've actually advocated for.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I couldn't remember if you were one that was opposing that or not. So I just figured I'd ask while you're in public. So, thank you. Do we have any additional comments from council? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, motion passes. Congratulations.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the state of Michigan.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
As a member of the Board of Police Commissioners.
As a member of the Board of Police Commissioners.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
All right, congratulations.
So while Chris, uh, clerk takes care of that, I'll read the, uh, scheduled public hearings. So while Chris Clerk takes care of that, I'll read the scheduled public hearings. First one is amend Part 12, Title VI, Form-Based Zoning Code, Second Amendment. Second hearing amending Part 12, Title VI, Chapter 1250, to include 1250.040.08 accessory dwelling units. Next hearing is amending Chapter 606, Section 606.02 to prohibit the placement of signs or on the public right-of-way in public building placed in facilities. The last hearing is amending Chapter 203, Section 203.03, establish the service requirements for municipal civil infraction violations arising from unauthorized placement of signs. Right into the record.
Vice President.
Okay, so the first one, just very quickly, this is actually the Second Amendment to the Form-Based Zoning Code that we actually approved a couple of years ago. First time around is really not incredibly substantial. There were some errors, some things that were missed in the first, you know, essentially when we initially went through it. And so that kind of First Amendment corrected some of those omissions, some of those errors. This amendment, however, is pretty substantial. There are a number of things that the Second Amendment would do if actually approved by this body. Among other things, there are a number of changes to the definitions that would be made in addition to some additions, right? So we're looking at a variety of housing options. As an example, we would be adding, in terms of the definitions, boarding house, campground, cottage court, housing cooperative, rooming houses. And then there would also be sections added that would actually regulate each of these new housing types. There's quite a bit of simplification and kind of merging of zoning districts. As an example, I think of the residential districts we're going to see a pairing down of, because again, we're simplifying and kind of merging those. There's removal of some districts that are affected by that merging and that simplification. And then there really are a number of changes to existing sections, and you think of everything from setback to lot size to fence and vegetation requirement. So again, it's substantial. I certainly want to appreciate, or I should say publicly state my appreciation for staff. I think they did a great job of being with us through the committee process, to make sure that we understood the amendments as being proposed. They did a great job, I think, when we introduced and set the public hearing, to make sure that we understood. And then they also even put some documentation together to kind of simplify it for us. But it's a lot to pour over, so before we actually vote in the coming weeks, I suggest everybody really get in there and read those changes. And then with regard to number five, this is kind of a companion piece. What we would be doing, if approved, is we would actually be adding Section 1250.04.08, sorry, to Chapter 1250. And essentially, what we would do is define and allow for ADUs or accessory dwelling units. They would be detached, formed essentially from a primary, single-family home. The ordinance, as contemplated, does allow for 1ADU per property in specific zoning categories, would require that they be, again, detached in the backyard or be part of an accessory building. You think of, you know, garage house, garages and carriage houses, things of that nature, being converted. They would be limited to two bedrooms. There's also some requirements in there regarding lot size setbacks, maximum land coverage parking. They would have to be registered as city rentals unless all occupants are actually on the deed. And again, this is more of a companion piece with the changes to Form-Based Code to allow for, again, a new housing type that the city hasn't necessarily regulated in the past. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. We have a public hearing on two different matters that are related, that has to do with the placement of signs in the public right-of-way. There has always been prohibited, but now it designates responsible party as, and I have to bring this up, the person or company whose name is on the sign. That person or company is not guilty of a crime, but is responsible for a civil infraction, which is punishable by some amount of money, not punishable by jail. That's a difference, crime, civil infraction. So that's what we had in our committee, and we didn't really talk too much about it, but as I was driving here today and the last few days, I saw a Curtis Hotel sign in the public right-of-way of MLK. And I was thinking, if our new sign ordinance was in effect, would we really send the campaign or the candidate a civil infraction? So I don't know. I think the answer is no. Then it comes to, okay, so are we just going to choose which ones we send them to? If we're not going to send them to, you know, Harris and them, will we send it to the handyman who put it there? So I think we have to at least talk about that. We didn't bring it up before, but I was thinking about it. And right now, it's just designated as a civil infraction, and the responsible person is the sign advertisement. So that's the public hearing, unless people talk about it.
All right, so we have a number of speakers signed in to speak tonight. You have up to three minutes to address council. First is David Muley, followed by Jim Delain.
I thought I'd put mine down towards the bottom. My name is Dave Muley. I live at 124 Regent Street. I'm here to speak about zoning changes, ADUs, but specifically some other things. First of all, I want to mention that, I'm sorry to hear about Mike Schultz. He was on a lot of my jobs, and, you know, we did a little dance now and then, but he knew his stuff, and he was a good guy, and I'm really sorry to hear that. So thank you for letting me speak. I'm here to support the proposed changes in the zoning ordinance that, if passed, would help more people find homes in Lansing. I support adding all five of these proposed housing options to the zoning code. With reasonable rules specific to each option, there is no reason to expect anything but an improvement in Lansing's housing options if this passes. I'm familiar with them all, but I would like to share a little bit of my hard-earned experience with cottage courts. Starting in 2006 and continuing right up to today, I have been working to complete Cottage Lane, a cottage court, or sometimes called a pocket neighborhood, on the east side between Leslie and Regent Streets. The idea was formed when I invited a group of planners, also known as residents of the east side, to a charrette to explain possibilities, to explore possibilities for what was, at the time, a six-parcel site that I had assembled over a five-year period. After six years of site engineering, public hearings, and some arm-twisting from both sides, the last of the nine city departments who have a say in this type of development gave approval to cottage court. Plans in 2012. I have completed about 90% of the project. There are six fully accessible three-bedroom houses, along with seven fully rehabbed existing houses. Since 2014, when the first cottage was built, I've had almost full occupancy. The connecting sidewalks and no-step entrances allow for maximum visibility. This and the sense of community is very attractive to everyone, but especially seniors still living independently who want to stay in the city. Projects like this have a significant impact on the city's budget. Besides all the money spent for hearing fees, plan reviews, and building permits, the city of Lansing collects substantial property taxes from these new homes. Over the years, I have had several builders and developers visit the project and get excited about doing the same thing. Lansing needs to make it easier, less expensive, quicker, and be a little more encouraging if we want more of this type of housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jim Delain, followed by Nancy McCrowan.
Hello, Lansing City Council. Jim Delain, 2520 Harding Avenue, city of Lansing. I want to tell you, you know, when I worked for you this summer, it was really nice. And I'd like to say that I miss each and every one of you, but retirement, retirement's a pretty nice gig. One of the best things about retirement is that it allows me time to do volunteer work for great associations like the Lansing Area AARP. AARP does amazing work for individuals who are aging, and that's you, and that's me, and that's everybody here. AARP advocates for keeping Social Security and Medicare strong. It advocates for senior economic security and voter rights. It offers support for caregivers and teaches ways to avoid frauds and scams. And it advocates for housing options, especially for those available to senior citizens. Your consideration of accessory dwelling legislation is terrific. AARP has 1.25 million members and more than 11,000 in Lansing living alone. We want to see an increase in housing options available in Lansing. ADUs provide a separate, independent, and affordable option so that a family can welcome an older adult to live in close proximity to them. They offer the perfect combination of independence and nearby support. Please use your legislative authority to advance this important item. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a point on our agenda when applause is not permitted. Next is Nancy McCrowan, followed by Jennifer Grau.
Greetings, dear respected council members and respected residents. My name is Nancy McCrowan. I live in the city of Lansing, and I have been doing health and community development policy research for many years. I would like to support all of the zoning changes that have been put in front of you, but I want to take a special moment to talk about the boarding houses. These are commercial dwellings that rent single rooms with shared common areas with staff on call 24/7. I would like to recommend these, and I would actually like to suggest a little change, that boarding houses should be allowed in all residential zones, not just the sections that have been written into the proposed code. It's a really great start, but I think you could actually go a little further with that. One of the things I want to point out is that some of the types of shared housing that we're going to discuss tonight are ownership models, and some are not ownership models. So boarding houses are obviously not a ownership situation, but we are a very diverse population in this city, and not everyone has the desire, the time, the skill to maintain a property properly and to maintain the exterior of a property. Not everyone can afford their own home, and so these boarding houses are a wonderful non-ownership option. And really, you know, we have such a dream of home ownership, but it's not a dream for everyone, and it doesn't need to be. I do want to speak to what would be an easy misunderstanding about boarding houses, meaning especially people who would use the boarding houses. So like I said, we have a great diversity of people, and there's a great diversity of people who would benefit from this option. This is not a hotel. This is not for transient folks. This could be a small space, a living space, that people could use, like professionals who are only in town for periodic, you know, three days a week sort of things, if they're having two homes. These could be for college students. These could be for people who are in a life transition and just want something smaller for a while, until they decide that they love small or they're ready to move on. This could be for people who don't want to own a home. So it's really for all phases of life, and I would like to make a little pitch for, this really represents an option to uplift simpler living. You know, when it comes to living space, less is more, and as we have all learned, life is simpler, and life is better when we keep it simple, and I think this option can help people have simpler lifestyles by keeping their living simple. Thank you so much for your kind attention.
Thank you. Next, we have Jennifer Grau, followed by Joan Nelson.
Jenny Grau, 201 Lathrop Street. Thank you for your attention. I, too, am here to support all of the versions of the zoning changes you have before you, and I'm here to share a few stories, because we're living in a time where people have a great sense of disconnection from their community, disconnection from each other, and loneliness is chronic for many people. And one of the things that these kinds of living arrangements help create is social capital between people. And so as Nancy spoke to you about boarding houses, I'll continue that theme and tell you that although we don't have them at the same scale that the ordinance would allow them, there are people who have several people living under one roof, who do not live together, who do not, who are not related to each other, according to ordinance, still allowable. And so we have a senior citizen in her 70s who has trouble getting her garbage to the front of the house. She has a difficult time moving around, and she has two young college students, both of whom work. The conditions of her rental are, you don't get to live here unless you're in school. If you live here, you pay $100 a month in rent. Dinner is available every evening. Let me know if you're going to be at the table. Don't have to be at the table. We have another neighbor, single woman, children out of the house, has always had an interest in cross-cultural experiences. Over the years, she's had one or more student, graduate students from different countries around the world, living with her, enriching her neighborhood, enriching her cultural life. We have Dave speaking to you about Cottage Lane. It is a most interesting community asset that he worked way too hard for any normal person to have to put together. But this spring, I ran a bike tour, brought people from about 50 different, 50 people from all around the area to come through the east side of Lansing and look at art and culture. And one of the things they were most excited about was Cottage Lane, to see that people could live in shared space in common ground with lovely sculptures and community gardening and make a living and make a life together. I guess I also want to highlight Omoja House, which is another form of bringing people together who are not related to find low-cost, affordable housing. Whether you're building an ADU, which is not exactly low cost, or whether you are, at my age, deciding, maybe I don't want to live in a three-story house anymore and would like to live in my backyard and let the next group of people rent my home so that I have some income. This set of options just gives Lansing an edge over other communities, where people can choose the nature of the housing they wish to have so that they can call Lansing home to. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Joan Nelson.
Good evening. I live at 217 Rosamond Street, over on the east side, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak yet again in support of the planning department's recommendations regarding shared-use housing. I'm not going to talk this time about the 22 Michigan cities and the scores of cities, actually, across the country that have already approved shared-use housing, where it has been consistently well-received by citizens. Instead, I'm going to talk about the fact that, in a few weeks, your vote on this issue is for a home. The home could be an ADU, where a caregiver lives behind a larger house, you know, occupied by an older couple requiring assistance with daily living, or it could be occupied by a family member. The home could be a room in a boarding house or a rooming house, where a medical resident, an intern, a visiting professor, a newly divorced friend has their own private space as well as shared space that they can, where they can enjoy the company of other boarders. The home could be a room in a co-op for a newly arrived young adult refugee, or a room in a boomer co-op, coming across the country, I understand, where an elder has private space and access to shared space and a support system. The home could be a cottage in a cottage development, where people gather in a shared courtyard for conversation or gardening, or to share a quiet summer evening. As these diverse forms of housing appear in our neighborhoods, it will not be jarring, but rather represent a gentle thickening or densification of our urban space. A strategy of increased shared-use options is not the only or the most impactful strategy for responding to what is a pretty dire housing shortage, but it is one that will, over time, make a difference to the people I've mentioned, the caregiver, the intern, the student, the elder, the refugee, the new in town, the newly single. And this gentle densification will likely draw more of what increased density generally attracts, that is, more transportation options, more small service businesses, more robust use of parks and green space. There's nothing to lose here, but much to be gained, pretty painlessly and without damaging the fabric and the feel of the neighborhoods that we all love. We're talking about incremental changes that respect local context. So thank you for your support of more homes, for more different constellations of people that live in our city and in our neighborhoods, or the people that want to live in our city and our neighborhoods, if only there were appropriate housing. Thank you for your time and attention and your support a few weeks from now for a home. Thank you for your time and attention and your support a few weeks from now for a home.
Thank you. Next is Lauren Singleton, followed by David Ellis.
Thank you, Mr. President and council members. My name is Lauren Singleton, and I am a member of the Thought Leadership Council for AARP of Michigan. I'm here to speak in favor of ADUs accessory dwelling units, or in my family, we like to affectionately call them in-law suites. Because of my bonus dad's profession as a contractor and remodeler, this has been a conversation in our family for years, what it looks like to age in place and what it looks like to care for one another when we're able to stay at home and be close to one another but not on top of each other. And so it seems very sensible that you would allow Lansing members to go ahead and have this be a part of their planning process. In just four years, there will be more people in the city of Lansing over the age of 65 than under the age of 18. That's a significant change in our, in our whole population and age in our population here in the city of Lansing, and for us to be a city known to love one another, I really truly believe that ADUs is just another way to say that, yes, we love one another, we want to give another option for you to love each other at home, close by, but with a little bit of space, we all know is also very welcomed at times when we need just a bit to breathe. Again, I just want to say thank you for considering that, to say that, yes, we do love Lansing and we do love Lansing aging and aging in place, and ADUs being a beautiful option for those that are able to afford that option. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is David Ellis, followed by Christopher Green Smidzansky.
David Ellis, downtown Lansing resident. I've been coming to these council meetings for probably over a year and a half at this point, maybe coming up to two years, and I remember one of the very first things I had spoken about at one of these council meetings was my interest in the zoning code, but my difficulty in reading it and due to how complicated it was. I'm going to ask all of you to absolutely consider voting yes on everything with the changes coming up in this. As for the changes to the zoning code, I heard reference to the removing and combining of some zones. This is a 200-something-page document. It is completely inaccessible to people who aren't used to looking through enormous PDF files like this. It's removing many of, many redundant zones. Most of these have very slight differences and only exist to talk about, like, differences in facade, differences in building appearance. There is no need for this. So this is going to be a wonderful change, just to making it so that people, like, the average resident of the city of Lansing can go to the city's codes and actually know what they're looking at. As for the different types of housing being introduced, again, wonderful, absolutely wonderful. I would personally like to see it be expanded to cover the entire city. I believe six units by right should be the norm on any property, but speaking with the people at the zoning department, they said this would have to come from the city's master plan, so that's where it would have to see these changes. I heard a lot of talk about affordable housing, but I want to paint a little bit of a different picture. Yes, these are going to be affordable units. These would be wonderful, like, for low-income people. It's not always low-income. As many people have already said, that this is giving, this is just giving you more options. This is allowing you to choose what you want to do with your property or choosing the kind of property you want to live in. Let's say you're not necessarily low-income. Let's say that you are making a little more money, but you don't, you just, you want to be able to put more of your money towards things you want to. You don't need all of your, this personal space. You're fine with living in a smaller unit. This is giving you options. This is meaning that you are not going to be forced to say, no, the smallest unit in the city of Lansing is 700 square feet. You're going to have a room you have nothing to do with. These are wonderful changes. I'm really excited to see. This is, this is one of the first major things I've seen so far from the city of Lansing where I just have nothing, nothing bad to say. I am overjoyed to see the city of Lansing taking a step that so many other cities have taken forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Christopher Green Smidzansky.
Hey, there it is.
Thanks for the...
Fanatic guy. You got it. Hi, everyone. My name is, do you want my weight? All right. Hi, my name is Christopher Green Smidzansky. I live on the south side. I'm here to speak in support of items four and five. I've heard a couple of great things from my fellow citizens, but the things that I appreciate are the simplification and repairing down of the zoning code in something that's more accessible and more usable. And I'm also in favor of the shared housing options. I, I love all of them as proposed, but I wanted to spend maybe a little bit of time talking about the accessory dwelling unit stuff specifically. We have hundreds of accessory dwelling units already in the city of Lansing, actually all across the nation, because historically, that's how our cities were built. They were permitted to be built, and they were permitted to be built in the city of Lansing until 70 or 80 years ago, when we made changes to not allow them. And so now we have many of them still in the city operating, but maybe quietly or without much notice. And we have them in my neighborhood. They are my neighbors, and I love them, and I'm happy they're here, and I would like them to be able to operate in a legally compliant way because I care about them and I want them to be able to feel like they can call planning, not planning, but enforcement and say, you know, something's wrong with my ADU, can you come look at it without fear of reprisal? So this is a useful way and a great way to bring awesome people into our neighborhoods and allow people to age in place and allow people to live with people who are maybe not their relatives in a safe and communal way, and I really am strongly in favor of this, and I hope that you consider approving it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Aurora Sealy, followed by Rowan Price, and they will be followed by Jeffrey McCarrill, our virtual participant tonight.
Hello. Thank you for having me. My name is Aurora Sealy, and I work at the Allen Neighborhood Center. So I'm here to advocate for east side residents that face higher-than-average rates of poverty. I provide information and referral services for resources related to health, housing, and food access, and especially most recently, a lot of eviction prevention and diversion. ANC has been a part of this network, given the diverse makeup of east side residents in need of diverse housing options. I personally lived in a co-op for three years, and it changed my life in many ways. Densifying is a solution to our current housing crisis. It increases the supply of housing within urban areas, building more units on the same land, lowering housing costs by adding more homes in a limited space, and then this adds to accessible locations next to things like transportation and also other resources needed to support a healthy quality of life. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Rowan Price, followed by Jeffrey McCarrill.
Hey, folks. I'm Rowan. It's nice to meet you. I'm here to talk about co-ops and about how important it is to unfold your paper before you start to speak. I have more to say about co-ops than I can fit into three minutes, so I'm going to just keep it to housing cooperatives as a land use definition, and I'll let the rest of it fill out the rest of my life. I think that having a definition on the books of housing co-ops, which are traditionally a very weird thing that nobody knows to expect, and allowing them to operate by right in areas that have buildings that are already perfect for them, is something that can unlock serious potential in our existing housing stock to house more people better and more affordably. Co-ops, they pencil that, not just as a development project, but as an easier place to live. If you live with more than seven people and you play your cards right, you don't have to cook dinner more than once a week, and you don't have to do dishes more than once a week. And if you pencil it out, or if you set it up right, you don't have to cook and do dishes on the same day. For me, that's pretty big. And when one kitchen works for so many people in the same square footage, you can house more people. And if you don't want to house more people, you can use the rest of the space for other common areas. You can have a room to play guitar in, a room to have a bunch of books and sit down and read, and just somewhere to sit alone quietly. I like to do that. And I think that the communities that live in these buildings tend to take care of them because the building that is incorporated, or the entity that's incorporated, it exists to house people really well. That's its main function, not to, not to turn a profit. It's to just be here and do a good job. And, and I haven't even talked about the bulk purchasing reasons and the cooking reasons that are like the economic function that mean so many people cooperate today. But, but cooperation really is why 50 people, just like me, live in Hyde Park, Chicago. This is Barack Obama's neighborhood in beautiful giant townhomes. And, and cooperation is, is why 29 people, just like me, live in Grand Rapids in a mansion on the top of a hill in a neighborhood of mansions on the top of a hill, in a city of mansions on the top of a hill. And they're normal people, and it's a beautiful house, and they live well. That, that, that building, it's called JR House. You can look it up. It was built for the guy who financed the furniture boom, so he had money before everybody else did. And 29 normal people get to live there. It's a beautiful house. I used to live in one. I lived in a co-op for four years. I lived in three different ones. I don't live in one now. I rent in Cherry Hill. And there isn't a right co-op for me here yet. There are two that I know of, and they're perfect except for one thing, and it's terrible, and it's stopping me from moving in. It's the waitlist. They're all full. Every co-op I know of is full. We need more. People want to live in them. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Next, we have Jeffrey McCarrill, virtual participant, followed by Linda Appley.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jeff McCarrill. I hope this is coming in clearly through Teams. I'm here to talk about the proposed change to section 606.02 of the codified ordinances of City of Lansing. That's going to be discussed this evening, I guess. 606.02 appears to need a small modification in order to recognize exceptions that are already found in section 1310.09 of the City of Lansing sign ordinance. I'm going to try to be as straightforward as I can with this because it's kind of like a lot of jargon, right? But basically, there are a handful of special types of signs that do not require a permit according to chapter 1310. It's 1310.09. But the proposed section 606.02 lists a number of types of signs that would require permission from the director of the Public Services Department. So this is basically requiring a permit because it's permission from an agency. I think this could be easily amended in order to smooth out the differences between the two sections. Basically, 1310.09 lists a handful of signs that are exempt from government permitting. It also lists a thorough set of rules that those signs have to follow in order to be exempt. These include things like public signs put up by the state, local, or federal government, construction or work signs, also a single sidewalk sign for a shop, or a single suspension sign for a shop. All these have detailed restrictions and requirements that have to be followed, but by following them, they're typically, according to the wording, they're supposed to be specifically exempted from permitting. The title of section 1310.09 is 1310.09 exemption from permitting. So it's very clear that's what they're trying to do. The intent is to allow for these limited signs to be used without the unneeded intervention by the city and unnecessary bureaucratic back and forth. As long as they comply with the rules, you get to be exempt. The issue is easy to correct in 606.02 by way of a small sentence. I know there's a packet that's already handed out about the proposal for 606.02. If you look at page one of the packet, you don't necessarily look at it now, I suppose, but on line 14, it ends with the words "or other public place." I think it would be sufficient to just add something to the tune of the only exception to this rule being signs listed in section 1310.09. I think that would make it so that both sets of rules would comply with each other and the spirit of 1310.09 would be followed, and the needs of 606.02 would also be satisfied. I, I hope this suggestion is well-received. I've not had to present to the city of Lansing before, so it's sort of like my first time. I hope I did a good job. If you need any additional information, I believe I have contact information with the person who had contacted me about this remote telecommunication I'm doing right now. I'd be happy to send along a brief summary of what I'm talking about. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Linda Appley, followed by Michael Lynn, Jr.
Hello. Hello. You know, not all of us are about 510 on these microphones. Some of us are shorter. Thank you. For the record, my name is Linda Appley, and I reside in the city of Lansing, Eaton County. I'm here to speak, and I have spoken on these before, the two sections, 602, I think, and 606, section 02. But essentially, and I think finally it may be coming to you, is that, one, in the previous meeting, it was stated that this would only apply to the median part of the sidewalk. However, I was aware of this, and my position in terms of that remains the same. This position should not be adopted. Two, it will only be enforced for small businesses or candidates who have little money and are seeking to make people aware of their positions, or that they are running for office. In a way, there is simply, you will not be enforcing this against presidential candidates. You will not be enforcing this against senatorial candidates. You will not be enforcing this against people running for governor. I could just imagine you taking one of those signs down and telling Big Grudge, hey, you are going to have to pay for this. I don't imagine that we would be that dumb in terms of how we enforce. Also, the signs, really, they assist small businesses in terms that they allow people to know exactly what they have out there. When we had at one point in time the Comic-Con, I didn't know about it until I actually saw a sign that said Comic-Con in relationship to that. Also, they let people know about candidates that simply do not have a lot of money and need to get information out. And in terms of that, I will also tell you that they provide information and medical resources. You know, not everybody does Facebook, nor are they that good in terms of using their smartphones to gather information. The solution to this, to me, would be one more where timeframes in terms of that should be applied. As it is, you need to go back to the drawing board because you are opening us up to a significant lawsuit, and I imagine somebody will take advantage of it.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Lynn, Jr., followed by Jody Washington.
Thank you. I just wanted to talk, touch base on real quickly, the monumental moment that just took place with Farhan Sheikh Ammar being named to the Police Board of Commissioners. I know that was kind of looked over, and we didn't get a chance to speak before it happened, but I just want to thank Ryan Kost for championing that movement. I want to thank Mayor Shore for giving that opportunity. If you all do not see what's happening in the city of Lansing by way of relationship right now, I don't know, I don't know what we, what we have to do. You know, I just realized and learned a lot over the last year as far as being able to throw some things away and to rebirth certain, certain things, and I think we get really far when we do that in this community. With that being said, I was really, I was really surprised to hear President Garza's comment about the defund police. I thought it was inflammatory. It didn't give any context, and you know there's a ton of that context. I was one of the people who was, that was actually promoting that. And four years ago, and here we are in 2024, standing arm-in-arm with the chief, you know, to find out better ways for them, for the community, as well as what chief, or what Farhan just stated he was going to do. So I thought it was inflammatory. This was a celebratory moment, I thought it was. I was super excited. It's the only reason I came down here, and to have that moment barred by questions, and then, one, it was so inflammatory with no context. If you want context on what defund the police meant, I think we actually did that. I think that there was a lot of funding that went towards nonprofit organizations to deal with the crime instead of throwing more money at the police to deal with that. We got advance peace here now. We've got multiple organizations who have been funded through those funds. I believe back in 2020, $80,000 was given to the police commissioner, the, the chair of the police commission, DA Jones, to run a police cadet camp with the young people to get the police and the, and the community back together. That was coming from the police budget. It was repurposing those funds. That's what the defund police meant. If you don't understand that context, you can give me a call anytime. I feel free to educate you and anybody else who doesn't understand. So I just thought that that was, no context given to that was, was, was pretty inflammatory. Farhan is, has stayed true to his perception of what he plans to do since day one I met him. If you need context on what that is, though, again, you can reach out to me at any time. So for that being said, thank you, too, for really pushing that forward. Again, relationships should be amended. We're not going back to 2020. A whole bunch of stuff went down that year on both sides, so we're not bringing that into conversation today. We're bringing it into conversation that the mayor, who had to run against Farhan for years, our council members who had to run against him for years, and all the stuff that happened in between that, we're able to resolve that and put him on the police commission, which is monumental. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jody Washington, and then Loretta Stanaway.
Jody Washington, Eastside. I too came to talk about the appointments. I couldn't be happier that Farhan is on the Police Commissioner, and I know that it was not a smooth appointment. I know there was trepidation. I know there was concern that he's a dissenting voice. I know what went on behind the curtain. He was made to go through more hoops than anybody else has been made to be on the Police Commission. What Sandy Zirkle went through today was unnecessary, because she's older and has been on for 20 years? Are you kidding me? We have so much discrimination still in this city that I'm appalled. Nobody questioned the woman that you put on the diversity committee because she had a brother with a disability. She didn't have a disability. Her brother had one. And for Farhan, he represents the black community, he represents the refugee community, he represents the Muslim community, and he represents an area of town that gets no representation and has more problems probably with the police than most areas in town and needs the police. And if he's a dissenting voice, I say hallelujah. Ruth Bader Ginsburg, a dissenting voice. Martin Luther King Jr., a dissenting voice. I could go on and on. Cesar Chavez. And I know for a fact, because I am frequently a dissenting outspoken voice that has been silenced constantly or attempted to be. I was denied my first application for HRCS Board because I wouldn't be a good voice. I was humiliated at the Charter Commission last Tuesday because I didn't go with the herd mentality. It's time we stop. Dissension is democracy. So stop making sure everybody has the right verbiage, the right opinion, or we'll toe the company line. Dissension is good. I'm thrilled Julie Vandenberg is on the library. I wish she was on the Charter Commission. Again, it would have been different representation. We have large areas that aren't represented, and when those of us that do represent those people come forward with a different thought, we are silenced or humiliated. Enough is enough. And what Brian Jackson went through, that was wrong. That was wrong. So what if he had questions? It was clear none of you had read all of that documentation. So that was shameful, too. So I'm just saying, I'm glad Farhan's on there. I hope the next time we have a dissenting voice, they don't have to run through all the hoops he had to run through.
Thank you. Next is Loretta Stanaway.
Okay, briefly, on the ADUs, I'm not especially for them, I'm not especially against them. I just caution you, as you look at that, to remember that the devil is in the details. And one of the things I have not heard discussed in any of this conversation so far is parking and how parking will be handled in these specific different zoning changes. So please, look at that very closely before you make a decision. On the purchase of the property at 701 West Jolly for a city election center, whatever happened to the mayor's one-stop-shop, everything being in one place? Now we're talking about City Hall, we're talking about a public safety, we're talking about a voting place. You're already up to three places. What happened to one? And for the South Washington property, I don't know. Again, parking is going to be an issue there. I'm concerned that this is going to vacate an existing business, or are they going to run both of them across the street from each other? What about Pilots and Brownfields? If we grant us Oprah, are they going to be coming up for Pilot? Are they going to be asking for Brownfield? I think those questions need to be answered. Thank you.
Thank you. We are now to the referral of the public hearings, item four, amending the Second Amendment to the Form Base Code.
Development and planning.
Item five, accessory dwelling units.
Development and planning.
Item six, amending the prohibition on signs in the right-of-way.
City operations.
And item seven, the service requirements.
City operations.
Okay, we are to the consent agenda.
Vice President Hussein.
Sure. We have several resolutions that are part of the consent agenda. One deals with traffic control order number 24-58 to regulate parking along the 200 block of North Grant Avenue. Another one pertains to donation acceptance for the Police Department Special Tactics and Rescue Team. And we have a resolution of donation acceptance for the Police Department Designative Funds for the Social Worker Unit. We have another resolution of grant acceptance. This one is for Police Department Capital Area Rescue Effort Grant. We have another grant acceptance for Police Department Services Training Officer Prosecutors' Violence Against Women Grant. And we have a resolution of appointment, this is for Timothy Klop as an at-large member of the Planning Commission for a term to expire June 30 of 2028. We have another resolution, this time for a reappointment of Andrea Bitley as a fourth ward member of the Police Board of Commissioners for a term to expire June 30 of 2028. We have a resolution of reappointment for Paul Collins, sorry, as an at-large member of the Lansing Entertainment Public Facilities Authority Board of Commissioners for a term to expire June 30 of 2027. And we have a reappointment for Sandra Zirkle, who was with us as part of our Committee of the Whole tonight, is for a fourth ward member of the Board of Water and Light Position for a term to expire June 30 of 2028. And we also have the city council meeting scheduled for 2025. And then we have a resolution to set up a public hearing on the Special Assessment Principal Shopping District, 2024 to 2028 rolls. That date would be November 18. With that, I would move the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any additional comments from council? Seeing none? All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? All right, motion passes.
Okay, we have item 20, the appointment of Mark Klaus to the Board of Public Service.
Councilman Jackson. Vice President Hussein.
Sorry, so this is, correct me if I'm wrong, this is the appointment for Mark Klaus? Is that correct? Okay, great. So we did have Mark Kla, not Klaus, I'm sorry, Klaus, mixing up those names. We actually had him into City Operations at our past City Operations Committee meeting, did a tremendous job, I thought, as part of that interview. Talk to us a little bit about his time here in Lansing. I actually moved to the City of Lansing in 2013. He has been the chief operating officer, general counsel for I Development for quite some time, actually has been employed by the company since 1985, and really decided a desire to service communities in some of his experience as being what he believes to be an asset to the Public Service Board. One of the things that was impressed upon us was the fact that he's actually been a part of some of these meetings already, so we certainly appreciated the fact that he's attended a couple of those meetings. So with that being said, I would move the resolution.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any additional comments from council? Seeing none? All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? All right, motion passes.
Okay, we are to item 22, the show cause hearing for 122 South Grant.
Councilman Kost.
Thank you, President Garza. This is to set a show cause hearing November 18, 2024, for 122 South Grand Avenue, commonly referred to as the Walter Neller Building. Just quickly, it was red-tagged originally in October 20th of 2016. It looks like this is owned by Summit Associates, two LLC. At this time, nothing's been pulled, and the estimated cost of repairs is $2.5 million. I would move this.
Okay, and we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any additional comments or questions from council? Seeing none? All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes.
Item 23, Act 5 of 2024.
Vice President Hussein.
Sure, so we just covered this in Committee of the Whole. We are essentially looking to purchase a property from the Salvation Army, location 701 West Jolly Road, property's about 2.4 acres. There is about a 13,000 square foot office building that actually is on that particular property that would be essentially adapted to our elections headquarters. So in any event, we do have or have secured grant from the State of Michigan to purchase and to renovate this particular property, an amount not to exceed $680,000. It was told us during Committee of the Whole that it is expected to cover both the cost of, I should say, the purchase, closing costs, and renovation. Planning Commission did go through their Act 33 review on this. My understanding is they supported this unanimously. So with that, I would move the resolution.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any additional comments from council? Seeing none? All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, we have two actions, Oprah actions related to 1102 South Washington.
Vice President Hussein.
Sure, and so this is, I mean, this is the last leg of what's been a pretty lengthy process. The applicant in this case is Rio Ventures LLC, and what we're looking to do tonight is to first create a, obviously, Property Rehabilitation Act district, and then we are going to ask the body to approve a 12-year certificate, which is essentially a property or tax freeze on pre-development values. So in any event, we did have Rio Ventures LLC in front of us when we introduced and set the public hearing. They are working essentially to develop the site into a full-service bar that would eventually be surrounded by a rotating lineup of food trucks, project, going to be about a $300,000 investment. This is kind of a carbon copy of what was presented to us, sorry, back in 2022. Things have, you know, kind of the stars have aligned, if you will, and they are ready to get going on this. So in any event, again, 12-year cert, there were some concerns with regard to parking, so we did take that to planning, and they said that, obviously, that, you know, this would have to go through plan review, and that there would have to be an appropriate number of parking spaces for it to be approved past that process. So that was, at least that concern was assuaged. So with that being said, I would first move the resolution for the district.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes.
All right, and then the resolution for the certificate, again, this would be a 12-year cert for Rio Ventures LLC. With that, I would move the resolution.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes.
All right, and then the resolution for the certificate, again, this would be a 12-year cert for Rio Ventures LLC. With that, I would move the resolution.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes.
One second here. Okay, we are to ordinances for introduction. We have Councilmember Spatafor introducing the ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan to amend Chapter 404 of the Lansing Codified Ordinances to add Section 404.14 to provide for the efficient use of EV charging station parking spaces and penalties for violations of use restrictions. The ordinance is read a first time by its title and referred to the Committee on Public Safety.
Councilman Spatafor.
Thank you. There's a resolution to set a public hearing for November 18 at 7:00 PM regarding this ordinance. I'd move that resolution, then I'll explain this ordinance real quick. As you know, the city's invested significant time and resources into putting EV charging stations in parking ramps and parking lots across the city. We're working on a fee structure for that right now, and to go along with that fee structure, our penalties associated with using those spaces when not appropriate. So first, we have to define what an electric vehicle is, so we're doing that in this, and then as well, define what a parking space is, and provide penalties for plugging, occupying a space but not actively using the charger. And that would be yet to be determined, but this would operationalize, assigning a fee to that. So I would move the resolution. Setting the public hearing.
Okay, we got a proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? All right, motion passes.
Okay, we are to ordinances for passage. We have an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan to amend the Lansing Codified Ordinances by amending Part 12, Chapter, Part 12, Title 4, Chapter 1236, Sections 1236.02, 1236.03, and 1236.07 to correct internal references and clarify lot size requirements for residential loaned lots. It's read a second time by its title. The ordinance was reported from the Committee on Development and Planning and is on the order of immediate passage.
Vice President Hussein.
Yeah, so again, I want to thank staff for kind of being with us throughout the process. We had Susan Statwick, we had Andy Fedewa, who's our principal planner, in with us to explain this. Pretty simple. There are some things in Chapter 1236 that simply don't comport with state statute and Form Base Code. So there are a number of various requests that come in, they're all approved because of some of those conflicts, and most of the changes here simply deal with minimum kind of lot width, depth, depth-to-width ratio, that type of thing. So again, this is simply to bring this chapter into alignment with state statute and Form Base Code. So with that, I would move the ordinance for passage.
Okay, this is a roll call vote. Do you have a proper motion in place? Is there any further discussion? All right, clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Kost. Councilmember Pallavani Glu.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
There are seven yays, zero nays. The ordinance is adopted. And that takes us to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. We'll give you another minute to sign in on a yellow sheet if you wish to address city And with that, we are to referral items.
Vice President Hussein.
I would move that. All items considered as read and full, and that's the appropriate referrals to be made by you, President Garza.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? All right, motion passes.
Okay, we have, from the city clerk, Menace's Boards and Commissions.
Place on file.
From the mayor, the appointment of Alexander Rusik to the Downtown Lansing Inc. Board.
Development and planning.
Proposal Parks and Melody Recreation Renewal.
Committee of the Whole and internal auditor.
Grant acceptance, Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund grant for land acquisition of 1624 East Kavanaugh Road and a parcel of land.
Ways and Means and internal auditor.
Donation acceptance, Shemac Events Golf Charity Outing donation to the Victim Advocate Unit.
Ways and Means and internal auditor.
Setting a public hearing on transformational Brownfield Plan Number 87, the new vision Lansing multiple addresses, and the action item as well.
Committee of the Whole.
Fees for parking.
Ways and Means and internal auditor.
And the two items relative to the Principal Shopping District 2024 to 2028 rolls.
Committee of the Whole and internal auditor.
Communications and petitions, one from Steve Perry regarding concerns about the capital area friends of the environment agenda.
Place on file.
And a notice from the Liquor Control Commission for SDD license at 4600 South Cedar.
City operations.
And we are to remarks by councilmembers.
Any additional remarks from council? Seeing none?
Remarks by the mayor.
Mayor Shore? No further remarks.
Okay, we are to...
Councilman Brown had one.
I would like to add, I don't know if this is the forum, but this week, we had the Economic Development and Planning Committee, as well as I had the Michigan Works Administrative Board meeting at the same time, and so I wasn't able to make both. And so, of course, now I'm unexcused for our EDP meeting, but of course, on assignment for representing the city for the Michigan Works Board. So is there some type of policy or something that we can work towards, or at least letting constituent know that we are hard at work, especially at large members, when we have the additional assignments on top of our actual committee? Because it just looks like, oh, I'm unexcused, but I was actually on assignment for the city, and I didn't realize that our EDP meeting was going to be 17 minutes long. So that's something we kind of spoke about, but I didn't know, you know, where we could go from there, because it's not fully reported that I'm at Michigan Works serving as the vice chair versus at the Economic Development Planning Committee.
Yeah, I would just encourage you, if you knew that there was two meetings at the same
Yeah, I would just encourage you, if you knew that there was two meetings at the same time, to just give us a heads up, and we'd definitely excuse you for that. I know that you did request an excusal, but it was like 45 minutes, I believe, after it started. So we were already out of the building at that time, so.
So in those cases, you just are unexcused absence even though, because I didn't realize that meeting was going to convene so quickly?
Well, I think if you just gave us a heads up, I mean, I think the committee chair, it's obviously up to the committee chair, but I think if we would have known that.
Vice President.
Yeah, I mean, since it is. So we actually had an issue, if you remember, when we discussed the minutes from a previous meeting. And we had actually, in that meeting, because you had actually texted President Garza during the meeting and asked to be excused, we actually amended those minutes. And we actually allowed for that to be an excused absence. But at that time, if you recall, what we said is that the expectation has always been that you get with office staff prior to the meeting, and you let folks know. So what ended up happening was, yes, you had a conflict with a meeting, but we didn't even know about that until almost an hour after the meeting adjourned. And so it's a slippery slope. If we start to allow people to, you know, call in or text in an hour after a meeting, do we allow it 10 hours after a meeting, a day after meeting? So the expectation is always, it's never changed. It's always been that for an excused absence. You actually call ahead, email ahead, that type of thing. The other piece is, I don't know if it was implied, we all have those extra duties. And so we're all on boards and commissions and things of that nature. But we have to remember that we are on those boards because we're a city council person, not the other way around. And so I would ask, you know, folks at this day is to make sure that they're prioritizing their committee meetings, council meetings. And if there is a conflict, continued conflict, what we've had to do in the past is we've actually had to shuffle those boards and commissions around. And we can certainly do that if that becomes a problem. And of course, that's up to Chair Garza. But if it becomes a problem consistently, we could certainly either move you from the committee or move you off of Capitol.
Yeah, and I'm not asking to change anything. I have no problem with an unexcused absence. I'm saying that if I'm only on the Michigan Works Board as well as other, all the council at representing the city as a council person. So if we're going to show a schedule, we should show all of the commitments of the council people because we have a schedule now that just says unexcused. Well, they should be able to see the Michigan Works meetings, you know, our airport or whatever it is. So they say, oh, okay, well, we can see that there's multiple meetings that our representatives are having. That's why I was saying not to say, come and change something now. And that's why I was saying, I don't know if this is the place, but I wanted to ask that in common for that reason.
And I appreciate that, Councilman Brown. I guess I would just encourage you, in the future, if you know that there may be a scheduled conflict, we can always work with the committee chair to maybe set that meeting later or earlier to try to adjust for your schedule.
Well, thank you so much because I wasn't aware, and I wasn't aware that we should, as council people, be prioritizing the committee meeting versus us getting assigned to, you know, Tri-County Planning Commission or Office Unaging or the Airport or the other committees. I thought they were all, you know, the priority of the council because that's why we're being assigned to these committees. So thank you for that information update.
Sure.
Yeah, and just to be clear, when we actually go through those conversations at the beginning of the year, that's why we, you know, ask folks to, as chairs, to get with the folks that have been assigned to their committees and ask them what days and times and things of that nature, you know, work. When we did that, I don't recall, you know, somebody saying that they had an issue with those particular dates in terms of DNP. So we try to make sure that we can make everything, and we try to make sure that we can prioritize everything. What I'm simply saying is, when there's a conflict, we need to ensure that we have quorum for our committee meeting. That's all I'm saying. And that the expectation has always been that we call in advance.
Thank you. And of course, you guys, we've all worked together, but I think what's happened, you know, for some of us, the other committees, they don't redo their schedule until after we've done that on council. So then you end up in a situation. But thank you so much. Just wanted to ask, thank you, I appreciate it, leadership.
Thank you. Okay.
All right. Then our first speaker is Kristi James, followed by Daniel Arnold.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for having me and allowing me to speak. I'm Kristi James, State Senator Sarah Anthony's Chief of Staff. Just wanted to stop by today and provide a few updates on what Senator Anthony is working on and some of the investments that we have put in this past year's budget. So as Senate Appropriations Chair, Senator Anthony fought for another round of historic investments for our capital region. Of course, the fiscal year just started on October 1st, a very exciting day in our office. I think we should have a fiscal year party. So we have been working really hard with our grantees as they finalize their grant contracts with the state. If anyone is having any issues with that, any local nonprofits or government entities, please direct them to our office. We're happy to help kind of cut through some of that red tape with the state budget office and the appropriate state departments. One of our top priorities this year has been housing. Of course, we've heard about that a lot tonight, but investing in a diverse housing stock, affordable housing, and making sure that our renters are protected. So one of the investments we are particularly excited about was investing $15 million to the Inglewood County Housing Trust Fund to support and expand housing accessibility programming, including down payment assistance, home repairs, and a few specific workforce and market rate housing development programs in specific key areas throughout the city. Alongside our housing work in the budget, Senator Anthony has been working hard to champion the tenant empowerment package to protect tenants' rights and ensure they have the tools they need to fight for those rights. So those bills are Senate Bills 900 through 903. Those would enshrine tenant rights to repair, require landlords to provide adequate notice for rent increases and leases, and establish a tenant right to organize so that our tenants really have the tools that they need to make sure that they're protected in their housing. I'd also like to thank our council for passing the resolution in support of Senate Bill 632, the legislation to cap predatory lending interest rates at 36% APR. I'm proud to report that that bill passed the Senate with bipartisan support. We're fighting really hard to get this done in the House during lame duck because we're currently seeing interest rates of around 300 to 350%. So that would be a huge improvement for our residents. Also want to report that last week Senator Anthony introduced a bill to create a construction loss reimbursement grant within MDOT to help compensate businesses up to $15,000 if they've seen dips in revenue due to extended time of construction projects. It's something we've seen on Michigan Avenue. We've seen it in South Lansing. And thank you to Councilman Hussein for your partnership when we first introduced this back in the House. I've heard you loud and clear. We need to prioritize funding for neighborhood roads in this upcoming budget. We're happy to continue working with you throughout the year, and we'd love to hear your budget priorities. And we're hopeful that the investments we've made in revenue sharing, $75 million for revenue sharing and $75 million for the Public Safety Trust Fund will help make your budgeting a little bit easier this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Daniel Arnold, followed by Loretta Stanaway.
Good evening, everybody. This is Daniel Arnold. Whoa, okay. I, you know, didn't go to dinner I was going to eat today, but I just felt really, really shook up about the library situation. I just really, really, really value our library in the downtown area. It is just so key. It's just, you have teenagers, you have like an area where like parents come with their little ones, like really young, like preschoolers and stuff, and play around. And then the adults are upstairs, and there's teenagers at the computer. And maybe they need a little more security. I noticed that that could be harassment of a librarian or something by a kid or whatever. But I just really think that it is part of our city, that this library is in the downtown area. So, I mean, if we had to move to another location because it's broken down, that's okay. But we just need it in the downtown area. And I know the party store is coming back, they say. And we have, like, say, we put the city hall nearby and subsidize housing, all these different ideas coming together. If you pull out the library, then it's just, everything is just apart. And I'm just really happy to see Julie Van De Boom appointed here to be on the board for that. And I will express my voice as much as possible because libraries really, really mean a lot. Like, one technology they have is called Hoopla. So I have a particular interest in police work, as you know. But I searched for FBI on Hoopla, and it gave me a result of 802 things. And it's this free library that has audio and ebook and everything. And it's just, what I'm concerned about is that the poor people in our city in downtown won't have access to technology. They won't be able to really expand their minds. I also did another search for butterflies. So I searched for butterflies, and that brought 457 results. It's just, there's so much different things available through this library, through Capitol area district library. And I don't know how we can come alongside them, but we just got to have a library in the downtown to really give everybody technology access. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Loretta Stanaway, and then Belinda Fitzpatrick.
Okay, going back to the Board of Water and Light for a little bit here. If you'll go to the packet that they passed out, and I want to mention that one of the issues that didn't get raised in the two-way between Jackson and Pethley is that the public did not have access to that information. The questions that Brian was asking, Mr. Pethley could have answered so that the public watching and hearing this later on replays or whatever would have gotten the ability to find out that information themselves. Because again, they did not have this document available to them. So that, I think, was a PR fail on Mr. Pethley's part. But if you look at that first page of the document and you read it, it reads like this. Board of Water Lights on peak hours are from 1:00 to 8:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and off-peak hours are 8:01 PM, Saturday, Sunday, and recognized holidays. Now, I'm assuming that there's some typos in there, that it should be 8:00 PM to 1:00 PM weekdays, comma, all day, Saturday, comma, Sunday, and recognized holidays. I'm assuming that. Otherwise, we're in a big mess. We're already in a small mess because if you read further, it says recognized holidays. The city of Lansing has 13 holidays for which the workers get the day off. The six recognized holidays that the Board of Water and Light gives you a price break are Memorial Day, Fourth of July, Labor Day, the Day of Thanksgiving, the Day of Christmas, and the Day of New Year's. It does not recognize as holidays Martin Luther King Day, Good Friday, Juneteenth, or the days after Thanksgiving, Christmas, or New Year's, or Veterans Day. So they're telling you, you have the holidays with a reduced rate, but they're not saying only these six holidays. It's buried in the fine print. It's not visible to most people. Most people are going to be unaware. I was unaware when I thought that maybe Columbus Day might be covered. Who knows? It doesn't say anything about Columbus Day in here or in our city's list of approved holidays. So I'm assuming that day was off, even though mail wasn't delivered and banks were closed. So my point is that if they're going to give holidays off, they should give all the same holidays off that the city workers get off for the reduced rates. And there's still no talk, and I don't understand why, there is still no talk. Somebody please explain to me why nobody is discussing water, hydropower, clean energy that's right around us in two major rivers and accessible. The city had hydroelectric dams at one point. Why are we still not talking about water as a clean energy source? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Belinda Fitzpatrick, followed by David Ellis.
And I do want to just point a clarity, that packet was, I'm sorry, that document was published in the packet, and it's on their city website, on their Board of Water and Light website.
Belinda Fitzpatrick, 224 South Holm Street. I want to talk about something I don't usually talk about publicly. I like to talk about spiritual warfare, politics, and the election. I am really, really concerned about what's going on in the Democratic Party. And I, you know, I've lived here since '87, and I've known a lot of Democrats, and I've always been more independent. And I love the Democrats, but I'm going to vote, and I did vote already. I voted straight Republican. You know, even though I like Deven Dorff and, you know, I especially like her after I found out that she believes in the pollinators and the naturalized landscaping. But when I see this campaign that is so focused on the right to abortion, a warning flag goes up. The right to kill the unborn is like this number-one overriding theme of this campaign. And to me, spiritually, that doesn't settle with me very well. I just, I've got a warning flag, and I came across this book in Audible, and it's called Unhumans. And it talks about the history of communist takeovers, which I've seen in lots of movies where the haves and the have-nots are turned against each other. So that the government that wants to take over, they take everything from the haves because the have-nots think it's going to come to them. And then they just get a firing squad, shoot everybody, put them in a mass grave. I mean, I am not kidding. Come on, this is history. I do believe that there are legions of demons. And that might sound like, well, it's something I don't usually talk about publicly because it sounds crazy to a lot of people. But I think that's why history repeats itself. Because I think we've got this spiritual realm where they try to influence us. And I voted for Trump. I'm not saying he's perfect. I do not want Kamala for president. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is David Ellis, followed by Linda Aplin.
Hi, Dave. David Ellis. I want to talk about the upcoming non-motorized plan, and actually, I have a little bit of a call to action from city council. So with this upcoming non-motorized plan, I want to focus on the word "plan." Plan, 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 plan. What does the word "plan" mean? "Plan" is not just like a cutesy word we throw around to make something feel important. The word "plan" is actionable. It is, it demands authority. It demands respect. The word "plan" actually means something. So when we say we are making a non-motorized plan, it has to have a degree of authority to it. A plan without a degree of authority to it is not a plan. It is just a concept. It is an idea. It is something that we think about. So with this plan coming up, I want to see two things put in place before it. I'm not certain if this will be done through a resolution or an ordinance that reinforces our existing complete streets ordinance. But first off, in this plan, we have to have an understanding of standards. We have to know, when the plan says that we are going to be pushing for safe infrastructure, we have to know what that safe infrastructure will look like. We have to have this idea ahead of time so that when it comes time to build the things and like out of concrete and steel, we know what we are doing. We have already gone over these details. We don't have to figure this out for the first time every time we do it. Secondly, there needs to be actual authority to the plan. When the plan determines that there is a need for safety on a certain corridor, it will enforce that. When there is construction done on that corridor, the changes the plan calls for will be put into place. In the non-motorized plan, it actually does call for, I mean, I'm sorry, in the complete streets ordinance, it does actually call for that. It has the exact wording of, "shall incorporate principles of complete streets and maximize walkable and bikeable streets within the city, to the extent financially feasible, future construction or reconstruction of city rights away or any parts thereof shall be in conformity with the non-motorized network plan." This is, I've never seen this truly be enforced. I've seen many things that are in the non-motorized plan calling for changes that never received those changes. All of these words here are to say, we've received $100,000 from, I believe, the federal government in order to make this plan. For this plan to be a plan, we need to, A, plan, and B, plan. This isn't rocket science. I'd like to see an action taken that shows that the city council is dedicated to actually making sure the changes that need to be made are made. Otherwise, I would like to see the city council work with potentially the mayor and public service department to return the $100,000 because if we can't be trusted to use it, then we do not need to waste it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Linda Aplin, followed by Joe Salazar.
Hello. My name
My name is Linda Aplin. I live in the city of Lansing in Eden County. One, here, I'm here today to talk about taxes. First, Eden County's proposal to increase taxes by 3% will raise my property taxes to Eden County to 8%. And I would encourage all residents that live in Eden County to reject this proposal. Secondly, I would like to point out that the proposal is on the back page of the ballot. Don't let them trick you by you not knowing where that proposal is. Vote no. In Lansing, we are already paying for police protection, fire protection, and various social services. Obviously, what the tax burden will do to Lansing individuals is their money will be sent to areas outside of Lansing to provide county services. Lansing residents should not be forced to pay for services where these people do not want to tax themselves. And believe me, you have a lot of people in Eden County who don't think that they should have to pay taxes, themselves to pay for their services. I would also like to point out why the city has not put up voting now signs on the, what is that, the Jackson Stadium? There's this big thing there, this big sign. Why aren't we putting voting now signs up? This makes no sense to me, why we have not done that. I mean, we're paying for this. I, I think my tax money goes to support something that has to do with Jackson Stadium. Oh, and that is essentially what I want to say, but please vote no on that proposal for Eden County. I cannot afford to continually have my taxes raised. It's already bad enough. I think the Board of Water and Light is increasing their, the amount that I have to pay by 10% and then down the road, they have another 10% that they want to increase. When is it going to stop? I do not have infinite funds to pay for this.
Thank you. Next is Joe Salazar and then Kelsey Briant.
Hello. I was kind of confused about the discussion about abortion. To me, thank you. To me, abortion, what they're doing is moving it to the wall, to the fence. Because they're, they're planning on kicking out all these other people that, that are here already and put them, if they put, when they put the fence up, the wall, okay, they will, when they come, when they come in to the United States, they want, they want, they come in for help. So if they can't get in and the females are pregnant, they'll have to have abortion, abortion there because they wouldn't have no source of help. So to me, it's, it's all really confusing. But anyway, I wasn't here for this, here. I'm, I'm, I'm here for safety. I, I was here before about the, the coating they use in the electrical wires and they've used asbestos. And the thing is, it's coming off the lines and I, hold this up. They're coming off the power lines and it's falling to ground in pieces. And then, then I realized that the more they, the older they get, they turn into dust. So what I'm trying to get is if you got some children or, and animals, you know, they'll, they'll, the kids will play with it and animals will eat it and it's going to the rivers. We'll get, we'll, we'll, might be pollution in the, the future. Anyway, this is what, it causes cancer. This is just, another thing is, what, what, what people should do is either just keep an eye on it, maybe, like, the only thing I can think is put it in trash because it'd be better than throw, throw it in rivers, in the water. This is what it looks like. And I, I just hope that, yeah, nobody, nobody will play with that or whatever. Anyway, another thing too, that I realized too, is that when I, excuse me, when I got, when I bought some, I've been, when I went and bought some nuts, walnuts, and I opened the bag and the film's on it, it smells like plastic. I think it's because they did more, more ink or whatever, or they're, or they're not letting them bags dry it out. Because these bags, like, like, any bags that use food, they shouldn't leave the chemicals in the bag when they, when they put them in for transportation. So I, I don't, I don't know who I would have to talk about it, but these companies are, we're Eden, well, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kelsey Briant.
Hello. Ooh, I'm never gonna get used to that. I'm here to support my friend Julie for being appointed to the cattle board, so thanks for, for doing that. But just, I haven't been to city council in a while, so I thought I'd pop in. I am pretty disturbed by the downplaying of dissent. And dissent is important. Dissent is required for democracy. Dissent is why we're here in this building, in this room. Because it's important that every single person has a voice, that they have their opinion. And their opinion might not be anything you want to hear about, but it's required. All of our voices are heard and listened to. And if dissent is feared, that's more concerning, right? Because it's important that everyone, sorry, guys, my ADHD is acting up. It's important that we have dissenting opinions in the space. If we don't, that's more concerning. If we're all talking about the same thing exactly in unison, that means we're not being challenged, it means we're not listening to alternative perspectives. I am fully in support of a person's right to choose over their body. I think when we talk about these things, it's important that we're talking about maternal mortality rate, we're talking about basic healthcare needs, specifically maternal mortality rate in black and brown people specifically, because we know that number is horrendous. I was doing some research the other day into, I'd heard this statistic and I was like, there's no way. In between when we lost Roe v. Wade and January of 2024, there were 64,000 babies born from sexual assault. That many people in that short amount of time we're talking about. So when we talk about babies being born at the border and, and all these things, it's important that we know we're actually talking about real world implications. And that's why this dissent is important, to be talking about and disseminating information, right? And so I think when it comes to appointing a Farhan, I've known Farhan for, you know, quite some time. He has been in the street talking about these things, so we should, he knows a wealth of information that other people are not gonna know, right? And so that's, that's important, that's required. And so when we go to the ballot box, whether that is on Tuesday or we've already voted, I just want to thank people for the added security in that when you're thinking about going and voting, keep in mind like the importance of, of, do you feel like your voice is actually being valued? And the way that it is being valued is by participating in democracy. So, thank you. Oh, before I forget, I want to also talk about Anthony Hulan and Heather Hulan, their family. There was a great loss that happened in the community a few years ago and I want to just show respect for them and the loss they had here. And if you don't know who that is, Google Anthony Hulan, he died in this building. Thank you.
Thank you. That was our final speaker.
Okay, with no further business on the agenda, we are adjourned.